Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Good evening. My name is Scott Carroll. I am your general manager for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. And thank you very much for being here tonight. It's great to see a great crowd. I think we're going to beat the city council meeting tonight. I think there's more people here than the city council meeting. So thank you very much for being here tonight. We've got two very good presentations for you. As you know, you're hearing about, you're all hearing about our new organic recycling program that's going to be kicking off here in a few weeks. We'll be here as long as you want us to be here to answer all your questions. So there's no rush, okay? We have two great presentations to present to you. I also have a video to show you. And then we'll do a Q and A. Like I said, we'll be here all night to answer all your questions. So, so no, don't worry, it's okay. Before we get started, I do want to do a couple introductions. First, I'd like to introduce our Vice President Art Perry in the back. And then Assistant Secretary Arlene Schaefer. And then a couple of my staff members will be helping me out with passing out the microphone. I've got Javier Ochiki and then Elizabeth Pham with my staff. They'll help answer some questions. So first off, I'm going to have Mike Silva from CRNR. He's going to give you a presentation about this really great technology on solid waste. It's the first of a kind. No one else in the country is using this. I think you'll be really excited. Mike's done this 100 times. He knows this stuff. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike. And then please hold your questions. Again, we'll, we'll answer all your questions at the end of our presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike. So it's all yours, Mike.
All right. Am I on mark? Okay. Good afternoon, I'm Mike Silva. I'm with CRNR. And I'm an overeducated trash man. I want to confess. My background, I'm a civil engineer. So undergraduate at University of Pacific. And my graduate degrees from Stanford. So my parents are very proud that I've been in the trash business for 30 years. The project you're going to see today is called anaerobic digestion. And I'll give you in a nutshell and we'll go through the whole thing. And this is going to be a very similar presentation that I give to the kids at USC and UCLA when they want to know about solid waste management. So you'll get a good overview from me and then Scott will kind of nail it. Anaerobic digestion is a real fancy word for replicating what a cow does. If you remember from biology, a cow's got four stomachs. They eat the hay and out the back end comes fertilizer and methane. We use the exact same microbes. We just commercialize it and expedite the process. So we're going to take your food and green waste and convert it into renewable natural gas to run our trash trucks on. It'll be the first facility of its kind in the country. So I'll jog through this and we can answer questions at the end. So this is kind of the hypothesis of the project. How do you make more energy and reduce greenhouse gases? Typically, as you guys know, to make more electricity, we burn more coal. We get electricity, but we get more pollution. Our project's actually carbon negative. We've put together what we consider the A Team. Iseman is a company out of Germany. They are providing the digester technology. We're their first client in California and we have the exclusive rights for the entire state. Green Lane does the biogas upgrading, which I'll go through that in a couple more slides and tell you what we're going to do with that. They're out of New Zealand. We're real happy with our contractor, William Lyles. They're out of Temecula, which is where the, the project's actually in the city of Paris. I should have said that to start with.
Can you put up my presentation?
And then JR Miller is my structural engineer out of Brea. That's our team that's building this project. So Trash 101. In the 70s, if you guys, the older folks like myself, you'll remember the steel trash cans and the bags. We came by, we picked them up, we took them to the dump. To be honest, there was no environmental or economic reason to recycle. The dump was like five bucks a ton. So it was the cheapest solution. Not long term, obviously. In the 80s, a little bit of recycling came in. You probably remember the milk crates. The city of Irvine was a big proponent of this and they were one of the first cities to do it. So we always talk about diversion and percents. So obviously, the first slide, we had 0% diversion. With the little milk crates, we probably had 8 to 10%. So the homeowners separated out their glass and plastic and paper. Then the 90s, it really exploded. Two laws passed, a law passed that gave two steps. It was called AB 939. And the state mandated that you have to recycle 25% by a certain deadline and then get to 50% by the second deadline. There was really only two ways to solve the problem. And I'm proud to say CRNR was the first company to do it both ways. So on top is the materials recovery facility. That's in Stanton. And Costa Mesa is my very first client. We signed them up back in about 91, 92. That allowed you to be on what we call a single stream. We did all the work. We took all the trash up there, we took it apart, and that's our facility in Stanton. The three container system was implemented in the city of Temecula. We were the first company in the country to put that in. And that's kind of the gold standard. If you don't have that big facility, then the homeowners do their part. And so on the bottom, there's three streams. On the top, there's one stream. So the material ends up at the landfill, recyclables, and then alternative daily cover. That is the green waste. In the old days, the dump would cover at the end of the day with dirt. When we started doing the green waste, they started to use grass for that. So they saved the dirt and kept the, the grass as the cover material every day. This is where we're heading. So it's 2010s. So show us three containers down here, because that's what most cities are on. Three containers really being three streams. The city of Costa Mesa and the city of Stanton will be on two streams, because you're going from one to two. So the two separations you're going to do or help us with is all the organics will go in this can and Scott will go into more detail on that. But in a nutshell, it's very simple. The organics are mostly your green waste and your food waste. That's the only two separations we're asking. That would go in here. Everything else goes in here. People keep asking me, what goes in this can? It's easier to do reverse sort. Grass clippings and food waste, everything else. Plastic, glass, paper, everything else goes in here. So that's what we're trying to help, you help us do. The reason we need help is because the organics that we get out by doing it ourselves up there in this corner, this facility over here, are not clean enough for the digester to create fertilizer and the renewable natural gas. So we have to have the participants help us get there. So that's what we're doing today. And I'll tell you about, you can see, now we have four products. In that first slide, I only had one product over there. Now we have four. So we have a little bit that still goes residual. There's still some things that aren't recyclable. Recyclables there. Now what we're doing, these two things come out of my digester, which I'm going to explain to you. Really, two products. One is renewable natural gas, which is the exact same gas that's coming out of your stove. We have to meet the exact same chemical properties of natural gas. And then fertilizer, it's the same exact stuff you're buying at Home Depot. If you go to Home Depot, you flip the bags over, all that stuff's made from different things. One's made from cow manure, one's made from chicken manure, one's made from food scraps. So it's the same exact products that are Home Depot and Lowe's right now. We're just going to commercialize it and do it on a big, big scale. So this is kind of, I'll jog through these. So up here, we're going to take your yard and food waste, convert it into fertilizer and renewable natural gas. It's going to keep the material from the cities out of the landfill where it'll naturally degrade and it would release methane. Methane is 26 times more damaging to the atmosphere than CO2. You hear a lot about carbon, which is CO2, but methane is 26 times worse for the atmosphere. Compressed natural gas is kind of a new field of the United States. Now, in the trash business, it's a big deal. We're running most of our trucks on CNG and we'll be completely on CNG by 2020. If you went over to Europe, they run most of their cars on CNG, especially Germany, Sweden, and Switzerland. Most of the cars are on CNG. In this country, the only car you can buy that's on CNG from the factory is a Honda. So eventually, we'll catch up once more fuel's made locally. And the neat thing about this, like I said about the cow, we haven't invented anything. We're simply replicating and harnessing Mother Nature. The microbes are all naturally occurring. We're just making them happy and healthy. Our project runs 24/7/365. It's a biological process. Once you turn it on, you can't turn it off unless you want to just poison the bugs. But they just run. What's neat about ours, again, for any engineering geeks like myself in here, is that ours is maximum flexibility. We can run milk, we can run Pepsi, we can run fats, oils, and greases, the stuff they pick up at Kentucky Fried Chicken or Denny's. We can run that, all the way up to grass clippings. It's the only digester in the world that can handle every single organic product simultaneously. Nobody else can do that. We have the exclusive with Iseman and Green Lane in the city, in the state of California. We tied them up. We have zero untreated emissions. Everything is either used or goes through a biofilter before it's exhausted. We actually, AQMD is Air Quality Management District, very tough district to work with. And it took us 13 months to get our permits and we're the only permitted facility in Southern California. We have five different permits on this project. So regional facility, our goal would be to handle 335,000 tons a year. That's all the organic waste from Orange County, Riverside, and San Bernardino. All three would go to our facility in Paris. From there, we make 260,000 tons of fertilizer and 4 million gallons of renewable natural gas. The interesting thing about the renewable natural gas of the 4 million, I can only use 2 million of it. My entire fleet is 2 million. So the other 2 million, I'm going to put in the pipeline and I'm going to sell. Once I put it in the pipeline, I can sell it anywhere in the state of California. So we have interest from Google and eBay, because they want to be a green company. We can also sell it to people that are running their trucks on RNG. So we hope to wheel that throughout the state of California. Another thing that's unique about our project is recycled water. If you go to our project out in Paris, out my front door is a sewer plant. We're going to take their secondary water to run our facility on. No one else is doing that either in the country. And we'll be their first industrial customer. So this is a digester 101. So this would be the typical green waste and food waste. This would be typically the grease from Kentucky Fried Chicken. In the industry, we call these guys the grease pumpers. You see them going around and around and they're getting all the grease. So we put it into our digester. It takes 21 days for the microbes to convert it. But the 21 days is only the first batch, because it's a continuous process. Once we got it running, 10 tons in, 10 tons out, we run 24/7. We never turn it off. Also, our digester is what we call dynamic versus static. We're actually mixing it all the time, 24/7. And again, that exposes all the organic waste to the microbes. It gives us maximum efficiency. No one else does that either. I'm giving you 10 years of research in 20 minutes. That's why a lot of these are first. We didn't just think of them tonight. It took us a long time to figure that out. So after 21 days, we drop out the solids, which is a standard screw press, and that stuff goes to field. Again, similar to the compost at Home Depot or Lowe's. We keep the liquids in here for a little bit longer, because they still have a little bit of gas and the microbes are still working on the liquids. When that's all done, that also goes to field. If you go to Home Depot or Lowe's, again, I use them as a reference, because it's practical. Miracle Grow, Vigoro, all that stuff you buy in one gallon jugs, very similar to this material. This is a very cool piece of equipment here. So the biogas comes out. Biogas is a very low quality gas. In fact, it hardly even ignites. It's 50% methane, 50% CO2. All we want is the methane. We don't want the CO2. Methane is what comes out of your stove, but it's about 98% clean. Ours is only 50% at this time. So what we do here, very clever, we only use water. We pressurize the biogas. We run it through a water column. The CO2 is soluble, just like the CO2 in your Pepsi or your champagne or whatever your choice of drink is that's carbonated. The water takes the CO2 out and the methane comes out 98% clean and goes right into my trash trucks. So the only byproduct of this is a little bit of water that we recycle and we're using secondary water to start with. And this is the first facility for Green Lane in California. They have several facilities across the United States. This is an artist's rendering, but it's to scale. So this is our organics receiving building. And we're building that, because no matter what we tell all our customers, remember, we're designing this system to handle not only Costa Mesa, but it handles Temecula, Los Angeles, Stanton, literally probably 25 cities we hope to have participating in this project. Time we're done. So we're telling the homeowners to put their green waste and food waste in there. But I hope you can imagine what happens on a Saturday night when they have too much. They throw the bag of trash on top, or there's a tennis shoe in there, or a beer bottle. We're in the trash business, so we know it's not a perfect stream. So we have a facility to take that material out and size it for us. Because we have to have a system that works for everybody. So that's what that is. This part here is my digester. That's the main digester. There's actually four of them there. And this is my post-digester. And that's the Green Lane. The project, we've made it so it can be completely automated. This is a conveyor. And picture it like the shuttle head in your HP printer where it goes back and forth. That's what that does. So this digester calls for food. It comes over here and fills up digester 16. Goes back here, fills up digester 8, and back and forth. So we have one conveyor feeding the entire facility. So it can turn itself on at 2 o'clock on a Saturday morning, when it's hungry, and feed itself. So in perfect world, we need no operators. But I always have at least one person in case something goes wrong. And I always have a second guy to watch the first guy. So there'll be at least two guys there. And most likely to be engineers or microbiologists. We're not sure what's going to be best to keep the, the digester running perfectly. This is kind of a summary of some of the things that are driving this facility. So up here are some legislation. This is a greenhouse gas. Everybody's got to reduce their greenhouse gases. This is mostly on your cities. The recycling law I told you was 35, was 50%. They passed the law a couple of years ago and now it's 75%. To the best of our knowledge, this is the only way to get to 75% is organics recycling. These two laws passed last year. 1594 says you can no longer take your grass clippings to the landfill and use them as alternative daily cover like we were using. They're going to phase that out. And 1826 says you can no longer put organics in the landfill, because it creates methane. This is kind of novel to California, but in Europe, they banned organics in the landfill 10 years ago. They haven't been taking organics to the landfill for over 10 years. This is the first project in California. There's literally 1,000 of these in Germany. This middle section, I'll, I'll go for this question, because I got it last time. As you guys know, the rate's about $2 a home. And we have fertilizer and we have gas. And people say, man, you're getting rich off this program. Why are you still charging me $2? Because the real price is about $5. We get a credit on all these that drives it down to $2. And then we've been very fortunate, and by Costa Mesa being one of the first ones to sign up, they have the guaranteed lowest price in the whole facility. We were given 4.5 million from the California Energy Commission and a half a million from AQMD, which is Air Quality Management District, because we're using renewable natural gas. And then I'm really happy to say this one here, California Recycle, CalRecycle is my boss. They're the ones that have jurisdiction over our industry. They put out RFP last year. There was 52 responders statewide and CRNR was number one. So we got a $3 million grant for that. So that's all been passed through to the rate payers to get the price down. California Resources Board down here on the bottom, they have a ranking of fuels and that's how they decide how to give out grants, how to measure projects. You can see diesel's rated at 95. That's how much carbon it puts out for every gigajoule of energy. But they're just being relative to each other. They don't have to be technical, just so you can get a relative look at it. So you can see diesel's at 95. You see CNG's at 75. So obviously, it's better. Landfill CNG, which is the methane to landfill, if they can capture it and convert it to CNG, is a 15. We're negative 15. We're the only negative fuel currently approved in the state of California. The reason that we're negative 15 for our CNG versus their CNG, 91% of the, of the gas in California comes from out of state. We make very little natural gas in the state of California. So almost all your gas is coming from North Dakota, as an example. So in North Dakota, to get it out, as you guys know, it's a hot button in the, in the papers, is they got to frac it to get it out, then they got to pipe it to get it out here. So when they do the whole study, that's why we're rated so low. Because basically, we pick up the grass clippings right here, we take it to our plant, make gas, and come back. No distribution costs, no running around, none of that stuff. So it makes it much easier. When AB 1826 was going through the legislature, they asked us what, as a, as a, I guess you call it an expert, what's your options for organics? So if you've got organics, you have three options. You take them to the landfill. In the old days, the landfill, the methane would just go, period. They didn't even collect it. Now they collect it, but they're only about 75% efficient. Because you can imagine, it's a 300 acre landfill, it's kind of like herding cats. You know, they got to try to capture this methane, methane from 300 acres. So they get about 75% of it. So 25% still going up, plus all the organics are still in the landfill. So you get no value out of that. The next option is composting. This is real big in Northern California. It's just basic farming with windrows. So they get, they capture all the nutrient value and that's really how most of the stuff at Home Depot and Lowe's is made today. But they get none of the emissions and none of the energy. So you come over to our project, anaerobic digestion, we get 100% of the energy, 100% of the emissions, and 100% of the nutritional value. So the punchline is, people say, how come, if it's so easy, Mike, how come nobody's not doing that? Because it costs 30 million bucks. And we're the first ones to jump off the cliff. So I'll jog you through a few pictures that if you went out there today, you wouldn't see, because this is all done now, this part. So we use our structural engineer out of Brea, because Iseman's out of Chicago. They don't really know what earthquakes are. So you can imagine what the rebar is in this. This is like two or three times what they're used to. So our structural engineer's local. That's the base for our round digester. It's hotter than the dickens in Paris. So we start pouring at 3:00 in the morning when we pour concrete. So we've been working nights out there. This is our round digester. I disappointed a lot of kids in the neighborhood. They thought I was in a roller coaster. I said, sorry, it's anaerobic digester. I start giving them this speech and they walk away and they're bored with me. But it's pretty good sized out there in the city of Paris. This is two things that CRNR brought to the table. This is what we call octiform. It's a new forming system, which I'm going to show you some pictures. So it's plastic on the inside and outside. And there's no bracing to it. And we also use self-consolidating concrete when we built this facility. So when we're all done, we have a plastic liner on the inside and a plastic liner on the outside. It also allowed us to insulate. See this white stripe right here? So we have two inches of insulation on all four sides and the ceiling. Again, to the best of our knowledge, it's the only fully insulated digester in the world. And that octiform allowed us to do that. So that's before we put the skin on the outside. It's plastic on the inside and that's all rebar wrapped around it. They had to be put on one bar at a time. We've had a great crew out there. I have no complaints about my team. So that's us pouring a digester. It's being poured right in and there. As you can see, there's no bracing on the outside. It took us 18 hours to pour that. That's about midnight. We started at 6:00 in the morning and we could only go two feet at a time, all the way up to the top. That's about 32 feet tall. And then that's the next morning when it's all finished. And so that was, that's, that was pouring right there. You can see a pump right over here and a pump right over there. They poured that whole thing with just four guys. Pretty amazing. And that was the final product. That's our post-digester, which has a bunch of equipment in it now. That was probably four months ago. And this is the main digester. So the material that you guys will be supplying will go through this hole. We have auger system and a bunch of equipment that's going out here. And then this is that main shaft that goes all the way through. And all this equipment was sent from Germany to us. So this is kind of the, hopefully, the summary. My recycling coordinators have seen this presentation a couple of times and they say, hey, Mike, that's too complicated for us. Give it me one sentence. So I, I hopefully, that one sentence sums it up. We think it's the most cost-effective, environmentally intelligent, sustainable organics management program available. And that's why we proposed it to your city. It's all Scott's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Elizabeth's going to put up my presentation. I just want to say, the, the pictures that Mike was showing you really doesn't service justice, because we were, the board and myself were out there a few months ago and we were actually inside that round digester and we're looking like straight up. I mean, it's, it is huge. It's amazing. Quite, quite impressive technology. Okay, so I'm going to talk about the program. How's it going to work? How's it going to impact you? So let's get started. So this is what I'm going to talk about today. These seven areas, you know, again, why are we here? I'm going to talk about the organic recycling program, what you put in it, what you can't put in it, when, when the carts will be rolled out. Of course, you want to know how much it's going to cost me. So I'll, I'll share those numbers with you. Talk about the future of landfills and why we think this is the, the wave of the future in technology for solid waste. Then I got a how-to video to show you. Hopefully, that answers a lot of your questions. And then we'll talk about what's next. And again, we'll be here as long as you want us to be for answer questions. So the zero waste discussion really began back in 2010. And that's when the board adopted their strategic plan for 2010, 2015. And one of those goals was to encourage zero waste. So after they established that goal, in 2011, we had nine meetings talking about zero waste. And you're saying, well, what is zero waste? It's, it's not technically getting to that number zero. That's not what we're trying to achieve. What we're trying to achieve is changing, is getting people on the path to zero. Changing people's behavior to getting on the path to zero. We had a, a couple of meetings in 2012 and that's when the governor signed AB 341, which Mike mentioned a little bit earlier. That's a significant bill, which I'll explain why that's so significant. And, but before, before, when that bill was passed, before we decided to dive in deeper and start really getting our hands dirty and started talking about 75% diversion, what we want to do is engage in the community. And what we did in 2012 is that we hired a consultant and he did, the consultant surveyed 1,000 residents, called them up, 1,000 residents. And that's nearly almost 1% of our population. And we, the reason why we picked 1,000, because we wanted, we wanted the results to be statistically valid, okay? Our consultant said, you know, you could have done 500, you could have done 300 and that'd have been statistically valid. He goes, no, we want to make sure that when we present it out to the public, this is what the community really wants. Think about when you, when they're doing election pollings, when they're doing elections like in California, they don't survey 30 million people, right? And usually, they survey about 500 and they usually get the surveys right. So that's why we wanted to pick 1,000. And the results are this. We asked those questions, are you willing to divert? Right now, when we were surveying, that we were diverting 54% of trash away from the landfill. We're now at 57%. And we asked that question, do you want us to divert up to 75%? And almost 82% said yes. And then we asked, well, why do you, why do you support that? And almost 42% said it's, it's the environment. And then we also had about 43.5% that were concerned about the cost. Big question is, you know, when you divert more, it's going to cost you more. So are you willing to pay a little bit more for this? And as you see, almost 42% said they're willing to pay a little bit more. I got 37%, we're unwilling to pay more, and about 21.5% are unsure. But of that 41.4%, we asked, okay, how much are you willing to pay more? And almost 73% said between $1 to $5 a month. So from that information, that's when we said, okay, that is telling us the community wants us to divert 75%. So let's start having some more discussions with CNR on their AD facility. And we had quite a few meetings in 2013. Hammering out the program, how it's gonna work. We've had four town hall meetings last year. This is the third one we're having this year. We do have one more on June 18th at the Senior Center. That was requested by the city. Cause a lot of seniors can't make it, so we're gonna do it at the, at the Senior Center. You're more than welcome to join us. But then on February 25th, 2014, the board directors adopted the program. So again, why, what are the drivers? Again, the survey was a significant driver, but also, you know, it's basically, it's our mission. Our mission is protecting the environment and the community's health. That is our mission. The goal, the board also established a goal of achieving 75% diversion by 2015 and 90% by 2020. But the real driver was this, as I mentioned, is AB 341. And what the state wants to do is they want to divert 43 million tons away from the trash. And there's only two ways they're gonna be able to do that. And that's through repealing green waste as alternative daily cover or ADC, which I'll explain what that means. And food waste, a lot of food waste is going to the landfill. You're gonna have to take that out of the landfill to achieve that 43 million tons. These are two more significant bills that happened just this year. And September 29th, actually it was last year, September 29th, the governor signed 1594. That's repeals the ADC as alternative daily cover by 2020. And then 1826, which he also signed, requires businesses, mostly restaurants, to recycle their food scraps. And we think that's just a precursor that's gonna expand to the residents one day. But what ADC is, so as you know, we have a unique situation, right? You put all your green waste, all your trash, all recyclables in one container, right? And it's, it's convenient and it's nice, right? Just about everyone else in California has the three can system you're probably familiar with. They have a black can for trash, a blue can for recyclables, and a green can for green waste, right? And all those people are thinking, great, I'm recycling my green waste. I'm doing my, my civic duty. But guess what? It's, it's not being recycled. It's going to the landfill. It's going to the landfill. It's, it's instead of using soil to cover the landfill, it's green waste. That's why we call it alternative daily cover. So that's what, and, and we're doing that too. And here in Costa Mesa, believe it or not, we were taking our green waste to, to the landfill. But for 15 years, the state has allowed cities to count ADC as diversion. Which is crazy because it's really not diverting anything, right? It's taking to the trash. But if the state say we're gonna do it, we're gonna say, okay, fine, we're gonna take advantage of that. And we're gonna count ADC as diversion. Well now, if the governor just signed that law, 1594, by 2020, that ADC is gonna go away. And what happens is now that we can't take the green waste to the landfill, our diversion is gonna go down. Remember I said it was 57%? It's going down to 42%. So now we're not complying with AB 939 that Mike mentioned earlier about diverting 50%. The other issue that we were concerned is that there's just not enough composting facilities in Orange County or in Southern California that's gonna handle that demand. Every city and county is gonna have to find some way to dispose of their green waste. There's just not enough demand here in Orange County and we think that's gonna drive up prices. So we want to be a leader and step up, step up to bat and, and implement this new program, this new technology of, of anaerobic digestive system. So let me tell you how it works. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do one thing. I don't know if I can do that. Javier, can you come with me? I'm gonna, I got some carts here. I'm gonna try to get them up in the, here on the stage so everyone can see. Cause I don't think people in the back can't see the carts, right? So I'm gonna come up on the stage. Javier, if you can maybe help me get that up. There you go. All right. Thank you Javier. Thank you. All right. Can everyone see this now? All right. Okay, so now everyone has their, their regular green cart, right? And you probably have like a, a CMSD logo on here. This is where you put all your, right now you're putting all your, all your trash, your recyclables, like your cans, your glass, your paper, and your green waste. It's all put in here. Everyone should have at least two cans. You might have one or, might have three or four, but you should have at least two, right? Okay, so there's a map in the back and you can also on our website, which I'll show you later. They'll show you the date when you'll be getting one of these carts. It's a green cart. You can tell it's totally different. You can tell the difference, right? Bright green. On here it has the type of materials that can go into the cart, okay? This is a 65 gallon cart. You'll get one of these carts delivered to, to your house, okay? And what goes in here is basically, this is the material that goes in. It's all your green waste. Your grass clippings, your tree trumps, tree trunks, weeds, flowers, branches, anything green goes in here. And what's new and what's, we're the first ones to implement this, what's really gonna be different, what's new is that you can now, oops, there we go. You can now put your food scraps in here. And these are the items that you could all put your food scraps in. It's just basically anything that's edible, right? It's, it's all your meats, it's all your, your pasta, your, your fruits, your grains, your bread. You can use, you can even put grease in there. I don't recommend it because it'll probably get a little sticky. We do have a very successful grease recycling program at OCC you can take advantage of. But you can put your grease. You can, if you're concerned about odors, you can put your food scraps in, in a paper bag or a newspaper, wrap it up and put that in, in the container. Javier, can you hand me, hand me those two, please? Thanks. You can also put compostable bags if you're concerned about odors, compostable bags. Make sure it says compostable on here. It's different than biodegradable, which I'll explain in a second. But you can also put your food scraps in here and throw it in, in the can. We're also giving away these about 2.6 gallons, what we call kitchen pails. You can pick these up at HQ on 19th Street and they're free charge. We don't, we won't have the bags, but you can get the containers. And what we suggest is that after you're, when you're prepping your, your meals, you just put all your, your prep food in here and your leftovers, just put it in here and then walk it out and dump it into the cart. We don't recommend, you can, you know, you can store it in your kitchen. I don't really suggest that. It's essentially just, you know, it's an easy way to, instead of taking one plate at a time back to your organic cart, you could just dump it in here and then haul it at one time. Again, that's at no cost to you. You can get a second organic cart at no, no additional cost. So, so in theory, you can have four carts. But we're hoping that you'll see, you might not need this cart, so you can turn that in at no cost. And you can still have three carts at no additional cost. If you get a third organic cart, then it'll be $8 a month. So, so there's, so you have potential for four carts. So let me go back down here. Can you guys, if I leave this over there, can you everyone see still the screen? Okay, okay. Let me come back down. Okay, so what can't you put into the, in the cart? And these are the items. I mentioned biodegradable bags and I'll explain what that is. It's different than composting. But we also, you know, the grocery bags, you can't put those in there. Storage bags, that's a no-no. Diapers, wipes and styrofoams, you just can't, can't accept it. So what's the difference between biodegradable and compostable? Biodegradable, it, it biodegrades, but it's not friendly to the earth. As I mentioned, it leaves metal residue when you return it to the earth. Where composting is just like composting your backyard. It's made of that same type of material. It's natural nutrient that's made out of. And it's, and when it biodegrade, or when it composts, when it biodegrades, it's good for the earth. So that's why we, we prefer composting and do not, we see biodegradable, it's, I think it's kind of a, makes you feel good, hey, it's biodegradable, it's really not good for the earth. Now, I do want to mention that we do allow exemptions. And that what that means is that we understand, some of you might live in multifamily units, you have no, you don't have any green waste, no gardening. It might be just a, a single person, we're living in a household, so you don't generate a lot of food scraps. We could give you, we could give you a smaller cart, a 32 gallon cart, that's one option. Or you can be exempt. And what we suggest is that you'll still get your cart and you believe you still want to be exempted, just give us a call. Javier or Elizabeth, my staff and CNR will go out there, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to you and just say, okay, yeah, we agree, you can't, there's no place to store your cart. So yes, we agree, you don't have any green waste and we'll exempt you from the program. We did a self-audit. We have about, I'd say about 4,500 multifamily units that we service. And we, we did a self-audit, about 1,500 of those. And we found about 58% are gonna be exempt already. So we're assuming over half of multifamily units are gonna be exempt, with a handful, maybe a single family household to be exempt as well. I already mentioned, talked about the kitchen pails, talked about that. So how it works, it, so when you get your cart delivered, the following week, you can start the program. You can start putting your green waste and your food scraps in the program. So the following, after you got your organic cart. And you just put your cart out the same day as you put your trash. No difference, same location. There will be a different truck coming by. It's a separate truck. You know, now we have, we have eight trucks servicing Costa Mesa Sanitary District. We'll have nine trucks now. We need an additional truck to pick up the organics. But again, there's fewer trucks picking up trash now because there's less tonnage. So we do have separate trucks that'll come in. They will be powered by, all our trucks will be powered by RNG, the renewable natural gas, which is the cleanest burning gas out there. And how it works is that once they, once they collect it from your home, they'll take the organics to CNR Stanton facility, their, their material recovery facility in Stanton. They unload it. I think as Mike, Mike mentioned, they're anticipating it's gonna be contaminated. There are people gonna throw shoes in there. They might throw, you know, wheel spokes in there. They, they know that. So they gotta pick it out, right? So they take it out of the waste, then they're gonna haul it back into semi-trucks. And they're not gonna haul that out to Paris and they're gonna do some more separating over there. Cause I think Mike mentioned there's a separation facility where they're gonna pick out all the contamination. It's gotta be clean. And that's why we're requesting you to separate it. When it goes in the trash, it's just contaminated. It's just no good to us. I think I mentioned all this. Can you deliver it? Yes. So our goal, we believe by 2020, this will be, we'll achieve that 75% diversion by 2020, which is pretty cool. We did look at other options. We did look at composting. The trick though, the problem is, there's only three composting facilities in Southern California, in the entire Southern California that accepts food scraps. And the closest one is almost 100 miles away from us. So that limits us. And like I mentioned, there's just not enough composting facilities to handle the man. You can still compost. Does anyone have the, the composting bins you can get? Great, you know, we, we sell compost bins. They're usually about 100 bucks at, at Home Depot. You get it for $30. You can still, if you want to compost, still do. The only difference is, as you know, your backyard composting, you can't, you can't throw meat in there or bones, poultry. But in this program, you can. Now, let me make this very clear. Question is, do I have to put my food scraps in the organic cart? And the answer is no. All right? If you don't want to put your food scraps in the organic cart, just put it in the trash cart. I guarantee you, there's not gonna be any trash cops out there lifting up your lids to making sure there's food scraps in there, in your cart. We're not gonna do that. If you think it's just not convenient for you, you want to put your, your, your food scraps in, in your mixed waste cart, by all means do that. But please put your green waste in the organic cart. Okay? Other cities that have, Mike said, we're the first ones to implement this program and I'll show what the benefit of that was. But after us, the city of Los Angeles signed agreement, Temecula just signed, Stanton, Sacramento, Paris, Hemet, Wildomar, Lake Elsinore, Riverside County, a lot of the cities out in the Riverside County are about ready to enter a contract. As Mike says, we have the guaranteed lowest rate at 7150 per ton for organics. Los Angeles just signed an agreement with CNR. They're saying 250 and look how much more green waste they generate than us. 500,000 tons. And we generate 14,000 tons and we're still got the lowest rate. And we're guaranteed that lowest rate. So if someone out there is a better negotiator than I am and can negotiate less than 7250, well, guess what? We get that better rate. Now let me tell you about the cost. Probably want, what's this gonna cost me? All right. Our cost is broken down into two, two components. One, we have our disposal cost. The top line up here, that's what we're currently paying. It's 5197 a ton and that's all our waste. That's our green waste. That's our, our, our trash, our recyclables. That's what we're currently paying. And we have about 42,000 tons and it's about roughly almost $2.2 million a year that we're paying. So we believe when the program's implemented, we're gonna probably generate about 20% of organics because we understand it's a new program. It's gonna take a while for people to get used to it. So we think it's gonna be about 20%. We're gonna get green waste. Within a year, we're hoping to get to 30, 33%. So in this first year, you know, we're thinking about, so that, that 7150 for about, you know, almost 8,400 tons of organics, it's gonna cost $600,000. That difference is about 2.3, almost 2.4 million. Difference of what we're currently costing for recycling disposal is about $170,370 a year. Then there's the collection side. That's the trucks. That's the guys that pick up the, the, their organics and trash and, and the capital expenses. We're currently, oops, we're currently paying about almost $8.91 for almost 22,000 units. And that's about 2.3, over 2.3 million dollars. The organic cost, the organic cost does cost money, so we do have to pay for that. And so that's gonna increase it to almost a dollar, or I'm sorry, $9.80. Again, here's the exemptions that we're anticipating. We know there's gonna be some exemptions. So they'll continue to pay the, we'll continue to pay the $8.90 rate. So the additional cost for, is about a little over 2.6 million. Difference of almost $283,000. So when you combine that, we're looking about $465,000 a year, which is about $1.72 a month, give or take a few cents. Now you're not gonna see that increase right away. And that's because we have considerable amount of solid waste reserves in our, in our funds. We don't have capital expenses, like we don't buy the, the trash trucks, we don't own the trash trucks. We don't own the carts. We don't maintain the carts, nothing like that. So what we're gonna do is that considerable amount of reserves, we're gonna use to help pay down that cost, to help offset that cost. So we believe, we believe you won't see a, a possible rate increase up 2019. Again, there's no long-term commitments. It's, we have a six-year evergreen with, with CNR. It's basically a six-year notice. They, you know, we say, hey, we, we want to terminate your contract. It's giving them basically a six-year notice. I mentioned, gosh, I don't know why I keep doing that. I mentioned there's no fines or penalties if you put your food scraps in, in the mixed waste cart. It's okay. You can do that. Keep putting your recyclables in the mixed waste carts. They're gonna be picked out at the Stanton facility and shipped out to the markets. They're, it's gonna be the same as status quo for that. I think you mentioned all this. Helps against lifespan of landfills. I think Mike mentioned it'll reduce methane and carbon dioxide of landfills. Let me tell you about this. This is why we believe this is the future of solid waste. You know, we're going through that water drought right now, right? And a lot of people think that desalination, which I agree, desalination and groundwater replenishment is the way of the future for water reliability. Well, we think conversion technology, what we call this, conversion technology is the way of the future for solid waste. Because good luck trying to put a landfill or, or transfer station anywhere in California, especially in Orange County. There's just no space. And as Mike said, try to get a permit, it's, it's not gonna happen. You have not in my backyard issues. APMD is hugely stringent on, on getting permits. It's just not gonna happen. I, I, I put this up. I thought it was very interesting. Down in northeast San Diego County, they've been trying to put a private landfill in that, in that county for over 20 years. They've been sued 19 times and, and spent $67 million. You know, that's how hard it is to get a landfill developed. Point of Hills landfill, city industry in LA County, probably didn't know this, but that was the largest landfill in the world. And it just closed almost two years ago. And that was, that's operated by the LA sanitation district. And when, it was getting, when the landfill was getting close to closure, they came up with this great idea that they're gonna rail the waste out to the desert. Because that's the only place you're gonna be able to put a landfill these days out in the desert. And it was gonna cost them $100 a ton to do that. And when the communities heard about that, they revolted. And so they scrapped that idea. So LA is struggling. They don't know where, where they're gonna put their trash. So they're, because you're not gonna, I guarantee you, you're not gonna find any new landfills in LA County or anywhere in Southern California, other than the desert. So that's why we think this is really the way of the future in the solid waste industry. Please visit our website. If you go up here on, right, it's organic recycling. I think it's the best one-stop shop on organic recycling. You'll get all your information about our program, about organic recyclings and other communities around the country. It's really a great program. And if you scroll down even farther, this is where you can get, you can get down with the map. You can see where your, when your cart's gonna be delivered. We have presentations from last year's. We have Q and A on here. I mean, it, it's just anything, you'll find everything on our website. So please, please feel free to visit that. And then now I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna, on our website, we have this video. I'm gonna show you. It's a five-minute video. Javier, you wanna start that for me? It's a how-to video and after that, I'll bring Mike back and we'll answer all your questions. Okay?
Since the passage of the Historic California Integrated Waste Management Act in 1989, Californians have successfully diverted over 50% of the waste stream away from landfills. Green waste is used to cover landfills instead of topsoil. And it's also used to help calculate the 50% mandate of the Waste Management Act, with Costa Mesa achieving 57%. In 2014, Governor Brown signed into law AB 1594 that repeals green waste as an alternative daily cover at landfills. This means the Costa Mesa Sanitary District's diversion rate will decrease to less than 42%. The good news is that CMSD has a plan to exceed the mandate and increase our diversion rate to 75%. Residents of CMSD will be first in Southern California to recycle food scraps. You will be given everything you need to get started. This includes a 65 gallon organic cart, a how-to brochure, and upon request, CMSD will make available a kitchen pail. You can store your kitchen pail on the counter or underneath the sink. If you don't have a kitchen pail, you can use newspaper or a compostable bag. You can place organics directly into the pail or on top of the newspaper or in the compostable bag. You can also line your kitchen pail with newspaper or compostable bags. Ensure those bags are compostable and bear the symbol. Biodegradable is not the same as compostable. And be sure not to use plastic bags as they contaminate the organic product. Compostable bags can be purchased at Target, Mother's Market, and will soon be available at your local grocery stores. Most people don't find that the kitchen pail has odor. But if you do, you can sprinkle baking soda in your pail. We recommend emptying your pail after every meal. But you can wait until the pail is full before emptying the contents into the organic cart. You can also place the newspaper and compostable bag full of food scraps directly into your cart. Your kitchen pail can be washed by hand and is also dishwasher safe if you remove the lid. Green waste can be placed directly in your organic cart. Green waste includes grass clippings, tree branches, twigs, stumps, leaves, weeds, bushes and shrubs. If you need an additional organic cart, please contact CMSD at 949-645-8400. And a second organic cart will be delivered to your home at no charge. Residents with more than two organic carts will be charged $8 a month per cart. There are a surprising number of food scraps that can go into the organic cart. These items include fruits, vegetables, meat, poultry, seafood, eggshells, rice, beans, cheese, bones, frozen food, tea bags, coffee grounds, bread, grains and pasta. You can even pour kitchen grease into your cart. There are a number of items that are very important to keep out of your organic cart. Plastics are the biggest contaminant, but also avoid diapers, wipes and styrofoam products. For a list of items that can and cannot go into your organic cart, there is a reference guide in your how-to brochure or visit the district's website at www.cmsdca.gov. Your organic cart will be picked up on the same day and from the same place as your trash and recyclables. Place it in the street, close to the curb with the front facing the road. Your organic cart can be rinsed out with a hose. Please make sure the water does not wash down the storm drain. You're probably wondering where the organics go after your cart is emptied. The organics get emptied here at CRNR's transfer station in Stanton, where contaminants are picked out. Then the material is loaded in semi-trucks and driven to CRNR's $20 million anaerobic digestion facility in Paris, California, where state-of-the-art technology transforms the organics into renewable natural gas and fertilizer. We believe using this technology will allow the district to achieve diverting 75% of the waste stream away from landfills. Renewable natural gas is the cleanest burning fuel on the market and will be used to power trash trucks while fertilizer will be used at local farms. For more information about the organics recycling program, contact the district at 949-645-8400 or visit our website at www.cmsdca.gov.
Questions right now? We do have one quest. If you can please speak into microphones. So, you know, we're videoing this and we're gonna put this on the website so we can hear you, your questions and so we can, and so everyone can hear our answers. So does anyone have a question?
Is mine on too? I have, I have two questions. I wanna get out because they cornered me outside. I didn't do a good job on two spots. First, they said I wasn't very funny or interesting. That kinda hurt my feelings. But the second one is, the question they asked me about the water, and I didn't explain it well enough. So once the water has the CO2 in it, the gentleman asked me, well, you're using water like crazy. We don't. We recycle all the water. I have to tell you, we depressurize it, just like popping your can of Pepsi. It just releases the CO2 and the water goes back through. So we use the same water all day long. Little bit of slippage, maybe one or two percent, but we don't use much water. So hopefully that clarifies that.
You mentioned, you mentioned releasing the CO2 to where? Where does the CO2 go?
Yeah, the CO2, yeah, the CO2, right now it goes to the atmosphere, but it goes through a biofilter. So we take everything out of what we can. We don't make enough CO2 to commercialize it. Once we're in phase two, three and four, then I'll be able to use the CO2 for an alternative product. We've already taught, probably the most likely candidate is gonna be someone that's gonna grow algae on the site and use the CO2 to grow algae to make more energy. But we're just too small right now.
Just wait.
Hi, I just want to know where all these trash cans are going to go on the street, because right now, the streets are pretty packed with cars and trash cans. And with all these households having an extra cart, it just, I don't know where they're all going to go.
I can only address that from experience. I understand the concern. Remember, 90% of our cities have three trash cans already. So, we know it'll work. Now, is there some adjustment? Yes. What will happen is, probably the sum total will be about the same. A lot of people have three trash cans, they'll get the organics, and they'll turn one in. So, we're hoping that by our statistical analysis, it'll end up with about the same difference. But most cities already have three containers. So, we know it'll work, and we know some people, it's going to be, what do you want to call it? A pain in the butt for some people?
Yeah.
But we know it works.
And let me mention, you know, I think I mentioned earlier, some people might have three or four additional mixed-waste containers. So, you're paying, you know, $8 additional a month for those additional, for those mixed-waste containers. So, we're hoping that once you get the organics, you're going to, you'll be able to turn in those mixed-waste containers, and also save a little bit of money. So, that's what we're hoping.
How do you turn it in?
Just give us a call, and we'll pick them up.
Yeah, once we distribute these ones, and you adjust your flow, then you call, so we pick up the extras.
Yes.
We got one up here in front, Javier.
I'm from New York, and I can tell you that in the summertime in New York, the stench from garbage is unbearable. And we get 100-degree days here in the summer. And also, if you have flies that get into these barrels, you're going to have maggots, which means more flies. What, the pickup day is still just one day a week?
Yeah, the pickup day is one day a week.
How do you deal with pests then?
Basically, you don't have any more pests than you have now, because the green waste and the food waste is already going into your trash can right now. We're just separating it. And I can only tell you from, again, from experience, we pick up 300,000 homes a week right now throughout Southern California, and most people already have organic separation.
What do you personally have?
I have three containers. I'm in the city of Garden Grove, and I don't even service myself. Republic services me. I wish I serviced Garden Grove. That'd be a great problem to have. So, we understand your concerns, but I can tell you, over the big picture, it doesn't cause a problem. We've been picking up three containers, I mean, literally, for 25 years. Weekly is fast enough.
Where does plain old dirt go?
Plain old, plain old dirt is actually organic and could go in the organics can, but I don't want it, because it's got no energy in it. Put it in the trash can. Great question.
What happens to the old carts, which in our case are bigger than the ones you have on display?
Most of them are recycled or repurposed in some of our other cities, but nothing gets thrown away. We either recycle them, but we take them back ourselves.
When do you take them?
Soon as you call. It's just like this young lady asking.
Back to the dirt.
Yes, sir.
If you've got roots and stuff, you want the roots?
We want the roots.
So, because you don't have to clean it off totally?
No, no, no. The dirt will pass through the system, there's just no value to it. It'll pass. And we know we're going to get some of it, but not ideal.
What do you do with the cat poop?
Cat waste. Pet waste.
Oh, you can put it in the organics cart. It's organic.
Okay, and how about plastic containers anyway, that we get from Costco?
No, we don't want plastic in the organics cart. That goes in a recycling cart.
Okay.
Let me ask, Mike, can it take kitty litter? Can the organics take kitty litter?
Yeah, it'll pass it. And most kitty litters become biodegradable right now either, also. So, as technology catches up, we can handle that.
Very good.
What about tree branches?
What, I apologize?
Tree branches.
Tree branches, that's organic. Put it in the organics cart.
Who's paying for all of this? Our tax dollars?
Yeah, the whole system, it's a system, just like your trash is now.
So, you're a different company, and now you make a big salary on our tax dollars?
No, 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 you're getting personal. No, no, hang on. It's got nothing to do with I make, what I make. But that's what he says.
Okay.
Is that a fair statement?
I worded it wrong. Your company, or the company you work for?
Yes.
The company you work for?
Yes.
Who's paying, is that from our tax dollars?
It's from your ratepayers. It's like every city pays trash bills. I live in the city of Garden Grove, I think I paid $22 a month, or something like that. So, everybody pays trash bills. It's either direct bill on your tax roll, on your water bill. It all depends what city you live in. But everybody pays for trash service, there ain't no free lunch.
Yeah, it's one unique, our trash bill is paid on our property tax. And you see your property tax, you'll see solid waste assessment, and it's an annual assessment. Right now, it's $18 a month, whatever, times 12. And then, like I said, possibly by 2019, that'll go up, maybe up to $2 a month. I showed you those numbers, what were its additional costs?
Yeah. I apologize for getting personal, but that kind of hits a nerve.
I lived in Costa Mesa for 17 years now, and that, like my gentleman said, that can be smaller. I already have a problem with the bigger ones in the spring and the fall cleaning up my yard. And now, I'm going to have to pay another $8, because they want the used to double dump, and now they won't.
Well, you get two carts. Do you think you're going to?
I know, but if you want a home.
No, you get two organics carts, if you want two organics. We're going to deliver one, if you want a second one, it's included.
I have two of those, big ones.
She has two 90-gallon.
And I can build those up in the spring and the fall.
Right. So, keep in mind, in theory, you would have two of these, and you could possibly have two of those if you wanted. So, your capacity is almost doubled.
But you're saying all my green stuff from my yard?
Goes in here.
Has to go in there.
Correct.
It doesn't have to.
I fill two of those other ones already.
Right, with green and trash. Because you don't have any other options.
No, I can fill them with green. I'd go borrow a neighbor's stuff. I wouldn't have to do that.
I'm just saying hypothetically, you're using two of these with green and trash today, typically.
Is the city looking at anything, you know, for those of us, and there's few in here that are on fixed incomes, doing something in the fall and in the spring, allowing it for one of us doing double dumps for us?
We haven't looked at that. You know, I've got a couple of board members here listening to you. You know, we will bring that up to the board, but thank you. Again, I have a couple more board members here that are listening to what your concerns, questions are, so we can have that discussion back in the back.
Is this program for Costa Mesa or Newport Beach?
The city of Newport Beach has their own system. They're not implementing organics at this point in time.
But we do have customers in Newport Beach.
Yeah, I can talk to that.
If you are customers in Newport Beach, yes, you'll have this program. So, do you currently get, you're our customers, so then you'll get a cart?
Yeah. You're serviced by the sand district.
Yes, yes. Javier's a bunch of questions up here, just, Javier's coming, pick and choose.
Hi.
Hi.
I was looking through this, and I thought there was something in here where, like, once or twice a year, you can request like, kind of like a slightly bigger container for dumping organics?
What kind of container?
Like, wasn't there something in here, like a smallish container, almost like a dumpster?
Giving it to some of the Cubs.
I think it's bulky item, right?
Or the Cubs. The Cubs, yeah, like, if you have, if you, that's one option, is we have, it's like a three-yard bin, we call it a cub, for people who have those one-a-day big yard projects, you could put in that, it's like, I think it's $50. It's a pretty good deal for a three-yard dumpster. Yeah, if you need one, just give us a call, we'll bring one out to you.
I've always wondered about the regular trash. Are we contaminating it by throwing certain things in there? You know, oil's getting on the glass, the newspaper's getting wet by the tree, or by the grass clippings?
No, that's a great question. Technically, you are. But because we're on a single-stream system right now, we deal with that. And statistically, it's better for us to do it, because this system has 100% participation. When we ask the residents to separate, it goes to 80%. So, that contamination is, I guess, nullified by the total volume. Yeah, so on the one container, just give you a quick story on it. So, the facility you saw up there, there was five cities on those single-stream when we first started. Newport, Costa Mesa, Stanton, Buena Park, and La Palma. They're all evolving to this, because now the technology's caught up. Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question. Is there a weight limit to how much we can put in the organics?
Weight limit for the organics?
If you fill it full of dirt, it might break my truck. But anything other than that, no. Grass clippings, yard waste, normal trash, not, no, there's no.
Well, I happen to have a yard that has a lot of cactus in it, and when I have to trim it, it's very heavy.
We've never had an arm fall off the truck in 20 years, so go for it. If the arm falls off, I'll call my shop. He won't be happy, but.
Okay, I have three questions. First of all, if you put the paper in the organic, then would you do cardboard in there too?
No, we don't want any paper in the organics, we prefer not to. Now, if you're using it to collect your food waste, that's okay.
Just a little bit.
Yeah, just a little bit of paper. But everything, I'd say this, I was telling Scott, keep it simple. Food waste and green waste, everything else, everything else. So, just keep it simple like that.
The second question is, we used to have the big item pickups twice, twice a year.
Three times a year, we still have that.
We still have that?
Yeah, three times a year, up to 30 items. You can do 10 items per collection, or 30 items per year, which no other city in Orange County is doing that.
Yeah, it's already in the rates.
That's great. So, you still have that, yes.
And the last one is, you said something about a place on 19th Street that I had no clue what it meant.
You know where we're at? That's our headquarters, on 19th Street. Right by the DMV, right there by the DMV. Yeah, Myers and Meyer, 19th Street. Yeah, right there in Queen, our headquarters. It's right by the DMV, CMSD, Costa Mesa Sanitary District, right there on Meyer and 19th Street, right by the DMV. Yeah, you'll have to turn right on Meyer to, yeah. Got one more question? Yes?
I have two questions. How are the grocery stores and the restaurants going to be impacted by the create on the law of green?
Yeah, you repeat that, please. Yeah, eventually, they'll be covered. Right now, the Costa Mesa Sanitary only covers residential. They're covered by the other law, 1826. They'll have to start separating over the next two to three years. And how that law works is, they're going after the real big organics first, which would be, example around here, would be UCI, Cal State Fullerton. Then, it'll go down to, you know, McDonald's, and then it'll go all the way down to the Mom &amp; Pops, and that's going to be phased in. So, everybody's organics will eventually be sorted. And the nice thing about our plant is, we can take all of that organics, the restaurants, food waste, and the green waste, all in one plant. One-stop shop is our goal.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, you know, I just saw a story on Channel 7, Eyewitness News, Ralph Superstores and Food for Us, they're doing it already. They have an AD facility, and they're recycling their food scraps right now. In fact, that reporter told about our program, she's going to come to Costa Mesa and do a story on us here soon. But some of the grocery stores, the grocery chains are already starting, they're already doing it.
Correct, yeah.
I'll get you, I promise.
I hear a small voice, yes.
What is the natural gas going to be used for?
Right now, the natural, most of it's going to go into my trash trucks. Any excess is going to go into the pipeline, and may come up in your stove at home.
Okay, and what, where will the coffee filters go?
Coffee filters can go in the organics, because the coffee grounds, it's kind of like the tail wag in the dog, so the filter's a small piece, and we want the coffee grounds. Thank you.
Javier, got one up here? Javier, she's been waiting patiently.
I just have two questions. One, I presently have a gardening service. They take the green with them, but maybe are we going to have to stop them from doing that?
No, no.
Nope. Would I just tell him to put in your green waste, and he should be giving you a discount? Because now, he's not charging disposal cost.
That's between you and the contractor.
Tell him to put in your green waste, now you're going to save some money.
Right now, they take it away.
Yep.
Number two, and I'm not picking on you guys, okay?
Sounds like you are.
No, you should really send me what I did.
All right, don't get fired up.
A couple of years back, I don't remember exactly what it was, they had these new trucks that had these automatic lifters and filtration and everything. And so, if you, understanding my memory's okay, it really cut down on your workers' comp insurance. Okay, is that true? The company benefited from that. Did any of that roll over to the city?
Yeah. Basically, we're on a CPI index, and every year, we have a lot of contracts, as you can imagine. And every year, we have to go through negotiations with the city manager, the city council, whatever, and we have to do all the costs in there. So, when our costs don't go up, we don't get an increase or the net difference. So, it goes up and down. In fact, we had reduced the rates two years ago, right?
Yeah, yeah, we did reduce the rates.
So, then, the same would apply to the gas to run the trucks thing? Was that?
Yeah, no, no. In fact, the young lady behind you had a question. That's already factored in, the $2. That's why I said, it was about $5. So, you take out the gas value, the fertilizer value, and the grants, that's how we get it down to two. We already netted it out. And then, her question was, the pipeline. The pipeline's already existing, it's SoCal Gas. We put it right in the same pipeline that comes to your house right now. We're not putting any money into the pipeline.
Yeah.
I hope not. That would be a surprise for me, but my problem.
But if you have very little trash, like a big barrel, I don't even get half-full in a week.
You know, I'm not familiar with the exact system in Costa Mesa, because I don't service the city myself, I do the AD. But I know we have a smaller size, this is a 64. We have a 35, which is about the same height, but it's about that much of a diameter. So, you can go to a 35 and try it. Yeah, it's pretty small, it's pretty small.
We also live in condos, so we have to keep our trash can in our garage with our cars. So, we keep getting all these trash cans. What do we do with our cars? Sell them?
I can't advise you on your, I can't advise you on your car situation.
But it's great.
I'm not saying that there's not issues with this. All I can tell you is that we service 300,000 people. Most people have three to four containers. Some people put it by the side, some people get exemptions, some people work it out. But I mean, it's a system to service all 85,000 people in Costa Mesa. And I'm not professing that it's perfect, and I don't think anybody said that tonight. But we think it's the best system available.
But I have to go take the trash can through my house.
I can't solve that. Maybe Javier can come over and solve that one for you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna punt on that one.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. On the cat poop again.
Wait, 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 how many cats do you have, first of all? Before I answer that question.
I have two anyway, but-
She was okay. You got a whole herd.
I have these plastic bags anyway, so it sounds like then you don't like plastic bags, right?
No, I don't like plastic bags. But if you're picking up your poop with it, send it on over, and I'll open it for you. We know we're gonna get it, we know we're gonna get it. I know people all do this with their dog thing, and, you know, walk around with those bags. We know we're gonna get those. Hopefully, those bags, eventually, the manufacturer's gonna catch up with us, and they're gonna be biodegradable and compostable, and my machine will just eat them. But we'll get it out on the back end, to be totally honest.
So, basically, then, what you're saying is that the plastic bags, anyway, I, you know, I have my poop in there, so just, just dump it in the-
Just put it in the trash. Just put it in the trash if you want to, you know, or-
Either one, whichever one.
Put it in the trash.
Sure, yeah, just put it in the trash.
And then, number two, anyway.
Hang on, we just discussed number two.
Number two.
Again.
I spray the pesticides, anyway, and so, with pesticides. And so, what do you want us to do in that grass clippings?
In the organics can. 99% of the pesticides that you're gonna buy anywhere are biodegradable. Our, our machine can handle it.
Okay, so it's like, you bomb it, so you're, you're saying that it is-
Put it in the green, put it in the organics cart.
Okay, and then, are you guys in competition with, maybe perhaps, you know, because what happens is that-
In competition with what?
I, I take my newspapers and the plastic containers to OCC, going through those companies.
Sure.
And so, are you guys gonna be in competition with them, or?
We, we, we're the, we're the number-one supporter of OCC. I buy and sell all their materials, 100%.
Yeah, if you still wanna take it to OCC, go, go ahead. Keep taking it to OCC.
Keep taking it there, no problem.
Keep taking it there.
Okay, thank you.
Are you selling these in the condos, for someone else, or for residents?
We won't have anything locally for a while, until we get enough. But right now, our plan is first wholesale it, then farmers, and then commercial. Commercial will be golf courses, city parks, and homeowners. That's our business plan.
Are you going to have 90-gallon containers for organics?
I don't think so, right?
No, just 64 gallons. That's why we're, we understand some people have 90-gallon carts, so that's why we're willing to, you know, give you two 64-gallon carts at no additional cost. So, you can have two 64s.
So, why not convert the 90-gallon if somebody needs it?
Well, the ones that have 90-gallons, they're grandfathered in. So, even if new residents come in, they always get, that's the standard right now, is 65-gallon carts. In fact, not too many people, people have 90-gallon carts left. The majority have 64 gallons. So, if you have 90-gallon, you're lucky.
But I'd like to put my organics there.
Well, we'll give you two carts then. I think, then we'll give you two carts.
It's 90-gallon cart. I have three of those. And by the very three weeks, I fill them up, all three of them. And anything that goes in the green cart, I figure it's maybe 10% of what I, what I have. Is there any way I could get three of those?
Sure.
Organic ones, and just one of the other ones?
You'll have three organics, but the third organic, you'll be charged $8 a month, though. Just like, you got three carts right now? You're charging, you're getting charged $8 a month for that, that mixed-waste cart. So, it's just the same thing. If you get three organics, you're gonna get charged that third one. But yes, you can get three.
Even if I just have one of the other ones?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, no problem.
No problem.
Still, still, the cart can be three, $8.
'Cause you, 'cause you have three organic carts. If you have two organic carts and one mixed-waste cart, then you're fine.
Yeah, no, no cost.
What am I gonna do with all the other stuff I have?
If you have three carts now, and we're, and you end up with another organics-
I have three, many better than those.
Right? You can keep those. You can keep those. We're gonna give you the organics cart. You can keep the 90s. We're, we're hoping you'll turn in some 90s, because what you're putting in here, some of it will be in here. That's what we're hoping for. I mean, that's statistics on our analysis. But you're welcome to keep your three big ones and get the organics. That's all right.
And can we put our organics in the 90-gallon?
No, because, because it's not an organics cart, and my drivers won't know, and they won't pick it up.
They won't pick it up?
Not in the organics truck, it's a different truck.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll just take it to the trash. They'll take it to the trash. They'll take the landfill, that's what they'll do. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, I have a question on the rate that you negotiated, the 72.50, is that for the six years?
71.50, it's 71.50.
71.50?
Yes, it's, it's for six years, yes.
Okay, and then, you would have to obviously negotiate a new rate after that?
Yes, yes. Or, or if, if, you know, if there's another agency that goes lower than 71.50, then we'll automatically get that rate.
Okay, and the hauling rate, is that also good for the same period of time?
The, the hauling rate, 51, no, that's-